Good evening, everyone. Hello, good evening. Can everyone take their seat, please? There aren't enough seats. Okay. Okay, we're gonna start. Good evening and welcome. The time is 6:30. It's May 12, 2022. Laguna Beach Unified School Board's Open Sessions Called to Order. Isabel, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for that. The next item is 4C. The report out of closed session, enclosed session by a vote of 4-0-1 with Board Member Jim Kelly being absent. The board approved the appointment of Megan Schooler as a new principal of Top of the World beginning July 1. Congratulations. This moves us to 4D. Dr. Valoria, are there any changes to the agenda?
None.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second. Thank you. Isabel, may I have your vote? Okay. All in favor? Carrie is 4-0-1. This moves us to five recognitions. We are so grateful that all of you are here this evening and allowing us to celebrate you. You are the reason we dedicate our time. Tonight, we're taking the opportunity to recognize students, staff, and community members in several different areas for their achievement, participation, and dedication. In our excitement to recognize so many people, we ask that you hold your applause until the end of each category. There'll be an opportunity for photos as well for each category. If your schedule allows, please stay until the social time after we adjourn so the board members can greet and speak with you guys individually. We also understand your schedules might not have that time, and there are freshmen just right out to the left that you're welcome to go get. And then, next, I would just, putting all of this together, Ms. Weber did that work with a variety of teams, and I would just like to take a quick second for us to just give her applause because that never happens. It looks beautiful. And then last, I probably will mispronounce your name. I don't do it on purpose. If I do, pronounce it correctly for me so that I can learn. And with that, we're gonna open the recognitions for the PTA Reflections Division winners. And Jennifer, oh, here I go. Chris.
Yes.
Chris, the PTA Reflections Chair, welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Griszkowjak, and I'm the Reflections Co-Chair for PTA Council along with Liliana Jones, who's here tonight. And we want to say how grateful we are to the board for this opportunity to recognize our Laguna Beach District winners. We had about 130 entries this year, and the quality of the entries was really impressive, and all of our judges expressed how much they enjoyed reviewing all of the art. And it's just really neat to see the different ages, how they express themselves. So that, as an organizer, was really, really rewarding to see. And this is a great experience for students who already identify as artists as well as those who are exploring new ways of expressing themselves and might find a new hobby or outlet. And so that's one reason that I really enjoy supporting this program. Right, we can start with the first slide. So just a little quick rundown of reflections. Every year, students are invited to submit entries based on a theme, and this year's theme is "I Will Change the World By." Students can submit in six categories. There's dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. The entries must include an artist statement that explores how their artwork relates to the theme. So that's what kind of makes this contest different than a lot of other art programs is that there is that artist statement, and the interpretation of the theme in that statement is worth 40 points. And then the other 30 is for creativity and then 30 for technique. And this is the 53rd year of the Reflections Program. Yeah, so it's been around for a while. And I'd like to thank our judges. They're all professional local artists, and as soon as I asked all of them if they would judge again this year or some for the first time, they immediately said yes and that they would be honored. So it's nice that we have this community. We had Rena Palumbo, Jessica Tychinsky, Tom Lamb, Jeffrey Rognor, Elizabeth McGee, and Sidney Greenbaum. And I'd also like to thank our Reflections volunteers, my co-chair Liliana Jones, Katrina Puffer, who was our TOW Chair. Liliana helped at El Moro. Danielle Roderzheimer at Thurston, and Christina Shook at Laguna Beach High School. You did an amazing job this year. Okay, so our first category, I don't know if you want the students to come up or just all at the end?
Okay, absolutely.
So students, you're welcome to come up. Our first category is photography. And it was anonymous judging, so not a coincidence. We have Grayson Griszkowjak for Reading Around the World, and he won for Intermediate Photography, TOW. And all of these, all of the Award of Excellence entries went on to Fourth District, which is made up of all of Orange County and part of Los Angeles. And so Grayson's, his photo also received a Fourth District Award of Merit. And he said, "I will change the world by making sure everyone can read and has access to books." And our next recipient for Middle School Photography is Jack Pugh for the spill. Said, "I can change the world one step at a time by cleaning up our environment and protecting our wildlife." And then in high school for photography, we have Morgan Welch with Perseverance. Says, "Fighting the darkness that doesn't wish to change will take people with perseverance." And hers went on at Fourth District to win Honorable Mention. Our next category is Film Production. And our middle school winner was Joshua Pence for Clean Our Beaches. Said, "If you clean, if I clean up beaches, it could change our world." Hi, Joshua. And he had a great stop-motion Lego video that was really impressive. Okay, our next winner for High School Film Production is Nicholas Moore, "One Step Toward a Better World." Said, "Together, we can and will change the world, but only as long as each and every one of us are willing to put forth our best effort for a permanent change, not just for some, but for all." And he also went on to win Fourth District Honorable Mention. Next category is Literature. And our first winner is Ethan Kopernick for Primary Literature. "What inspired my work is the love of animals and wanting to help them survive." Our next winner for Intermediate Literature is Taylor Jones, "Smile Can Change the World." And she says kindness is a very important part of our lives. Without it, we would always be very frustrated and upset. And she also won an honorable mention at Fourth District. Our middle school division winner was Elise Chen, "Letter to My Future Self." She went on to Fourth District Award of Excellence, so her entry went on to State after that. And she says, "My work relates to the theme not by making a big change all at once, but by making small, everyday changes with a dose of hope." And then for High School Literature, Luella Hunt, "Changing the World." "We've accomplished so much, but we still are unable to give back and save our planet." For Visual Arts, we have Tallulah Amin, "Oceans Are Not Trashcans." I think Tallulah's here tonight. She said, "We need to keep our oceans clean and healthy." And then we have a 3D winner for our Intermediate Visual Arts, Alexander Antrus, or Antrus, for Magnificent Monarchs. "By doing my part and bringing awareness to others, we can help save the monarchs." Next, for Middle School Visual Arts, Quinn Hollerin, "Help Save the Ocean Reef." "My artwork is about helping the reefs and oceans because the reefs help control the habitat of tons of animals in the ecosystem." High School Visual Arts, we have June O'Donnell, sharing stories, sharing ideas, being creative, and inspiring others are my favorite things about art. And then our next and final category, Music Composition. Our middle school winner was Parker Bryan, Notes of Change, and he says, "Change does not need to be complicated, it can be simple." And at the high school level, we have Marlena Steinbeck, "Persistence." She said, "My piece contains much repetition, is inspired by box fuge. This represents the persistence and dedication I will show when I'm changing the world."
Can all of you remain there? Sorry, can all of you remain there? Board members, do you want to step up for a photo? Oh, is there one more?
I think that's everybody.
Okay. I was just gonna have the board come up and so we can take a photo together. Okay, next is Plain Air. And so for B through H, Principal Julie Hatchell, myself, Kelly, and Isabel are gonna come and help present. And for B, Joe Vidal, you're gonna join us as well.
Good evening. Each year, the Laguna Plain Air Painters Association invites students from each of our schools to participate in a professional plain air lesson with students creating a masterpiece that's painted at Heiser Park. Tonight, we would like to congratulate the students who participated in this prestigious event. We also have several of your art pieces here tonight around the room in the back displayed, so please take a look at those. They are absolutely beautiful. I don't think I could have painted any one of them. So awesome job, kids. For those of you that are being called up, come on up and get your certificates from El Moro. Oh, before I say this, Mr. Duddy sends his regrets, said he could not be here tonight. He is actually celebrating his mother-in-law's 90th birthday. So it's very, very special. And he could not be here, but he sends his absolute love and congratulations. So from El Moro, we have Chloe Worleman, Sila Hunter, Monroe Cortez, Annie Zhu, Christine Pie, and Koah Chesley. Come on up. I know Monroe's here. And from Top of the World, we have Lily Taylor, Marissa Gomez, Sydney Sweet, Piers Nassar, Maya Trevino, Mila Clong, Laura Tonkey, and Ava Low.
Right. Do you want to take a picture with all of us? Or is this the group or do you still have pictures? Do you want to do yours too?
And TMS would also like to recognize our eighth-grade Plain Air artists who spent the day with professional painters at Heiser Park to create pieces depicting landscape views of beautiful Laguna Beach. We would like to call up Rita Capano, Lavianna Watkins, Brighton Welch, Piper Wald, Zachary Mays, Dylan Lee, Isabella La Bosco, and Kelsey Deering. Let's give him a big round of applause.
I'll do the, yeah, I'll do the next one. This is the Laguna Beach 2020-21 Holiday Palette Contest Winners. So this is from El Moro and Top of the World.
All right. So each year, we run the Laguna Beach Holiday Art Palette Contest, and our students submit their exhibitions to the city. And we had several winners that were posted throughout the city. We'd like to congratulate from El Moro, Mina, Thea, Dylan Tian, Kate Kirby, Riley Berberian, and Taylor Jones. Come on up. And from Top of the World, we have Vivian Gu, Gabriela Trevino, Alexander Antrus, and Abigail Olin.
Next, we're gonna honor the AXA Every Student Succeeding Award. This is the Administrators Association of California. Dr. Hatchell.
So each year, with partnership of the Association of California School Administrators, our district selects one student who's demonstrated grit, perseverance, resilience, and overcoming adversity. And this year, Top of the World had the honor of selecting a student. I'd like to congratulate fifth-grade student Carly Carwell for being our 2022 Every Student Succeeding Award recipient.
And next, the amazing El Moro Boo Blast T-Shirt Art Design Winner. I get to judge these, so I know how great they are. Dr. Hatchell.
And our Boo Blast winner, fifth-grader Dustin Dang. Come on up, Dustin.
Yeah, it goes on next year's t-shirt, I believe. And next, we have the Top of the World Jog-a-thon T-shirt winner, Dr. Hatchell.
And this one went on this year's fifth grader, Saran Demergian. Come on up, Saran. Congratulations.
This next one is, Mr. Duddy was really upset. He couldn't be here to honor these two students in particular. But this is for Student Support of the El Moro Garden, our natural.
And he wanted to make sure I got this right for him. He said he was so grateful for these LBHS students who were instrumental in getting student volunteers orchestrated to help to restart the garden program after the long pandemic. So congratulations to these two students. I have Theodore Coffey and William Coffey.
Next is the Elementary Spelling Bee.
So we're going to do all three of our spelling bee winners together. So for our site spelling bee contest winners, at El Moro, we had fifth-grader Gavin Trotter and fifth-grader Owen McCormick. Owen was the runner-up, and Gavin was the spelling bee winner from El Moro. And from Top of the World, our spelling bee winner was Henry Smith. And our runner-up was Natalie Dechari. That one was a battle to the end. And so was the district, yes. Dr. Valoria saw that one, too. I don't think I could pronounce those last couple words. They were pretty hard. So the final spelling bee at the district that brought together both El Moro and Top of the World students, again, a battle to the end. We had our runner-up, Owen McCormick, from El Moro, and our winner, Eli Parsons, from Top of the World.
Next, we're going to honor our reclassified English Language Learner students. Yadira Rojas, please.
Hey, good evening. My name is Yadira Rojas. I'm the Instructional Coach for English Language Development for our district. I am honored to be here tonight to recognize the accomplishment of our bilingual students that have become proficient in their second language. With that said, I would like to highlight that we have over 22 languages in our district. And tonight, our students will represent seven of those languages: Chinese, French, Vietnamese, Russian, Portuguese, Japanese, and Spanish. Let's welcome our students as they come forward. From El Moro, Jasmine Romaldo Garcia. From El Moro, Rafael Castillo Lopez. Also, from El Moro, Rodrigo Posa. From Top of the World, we have Vivian Gu. Top of the World, Yamato Yanagizawa. Top of the World, Michael Darkskic. Top of the World, Matthew Montoya. From Thurston, Gonzalo Montoya. Thurston, Evan Alexander. And Thurston, Aiden Quish. From Laguna Beach High School, Moises Ramirez. Laguna Beach High School, Evelyn Castillo. Yamna Anaya. Marista Baydini. And Nicholas Madam.
While they're getting their certificates, I also want to just take a second to recognize Yadira Rojas, here are ELD Program Coordinator who is a tireless advocate for these students and helping them become bilingual and bilingual students. We can't thank her enough. She works with them from the youngest to the oldest. And so, thank you, Yadira. And so, thank you, Yadira.
Dean and Jan, can you stay up there? You'll go find out that works for you. Okay. Next, we're gonna, Dean and Jan will help with Model United Nations veterans.
All right. So Thurston Middle School would like to call up Mallory Keller, Liam McRae, Estella Newton, and Zoe Tran. We've got some fans here tonight. These students have dedicated themselves to Model United Nations throughout their time here at Thurston. From new and inexperienced 6th graders through digital conferences during the height of the pandemic. And finally, as some of the strongest delegates in all of Orange County. These four students have shined. They have grown in their ability to debate with high schoolers, understand the nuances of global issues in a deep way, and write eloquent research papers, all while balancing endless other extracurricular activities and full academic loads. Mallory, Liam, Stella, and Zoe, congratulations and good luck as you continue on to the Model UN program at Laguna Beach High School next year. Let's give them a big round of applause. And now for our moot court. We'd like to call back Zoe Tran, bring up Archer Joseph, bring back Estella Newton, and bring up Alexandra Noddage. Congratulations to our moot court students for participating in the Orange County Constitutional Rights Foundation competition. These students represented prosecution and defense attorneys in the case of United States versus Adams. Our staff, especially Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Martinez, were amazed by their dedication and enthusiasm to defend their cases before federal judges. A big congratulations for your amazing efforts. Well done. And now for our Forensics Lead Investigators. I'd like to call up Ella Valoria and Kami Thomas. Nobody's looking, don't worry. Congratulations, Ella and Kami, for being outstanding lead investigators in the John Wilkes Booth forensic crime scene. They each led their teams to investigate, analyze, and process two murdered victims to identify the John Wilkes Booth burnt body on Garrett's farm. There were 26 students who participated in the crime scene with the LBUSD staff, the LBD Police Department and Fire Department, and our staff and forensics teachers, Mrs. Martinez and Ms. Martinez, are so proud of your dedication and ability to investigate the scene, work across teams, and conclude the case. Let's give these lead investigators a big round of applause. Nice job. And now I would like to call up Mallory Keller. Each year, the Patriots Day Parade Committee opens an essay contest for our 8th graders, and this year's prompt was toward community and unity. Oh, sorry. What did I miss? Out of order, my apologies. May I proceed? Okay. This year's prompt was toward community and unity. Mallory titled her essay, "I Body United as One." She focused on the isolation of quarantine and her understanding of what it is to be a part of a community, and it was a very touching, personal piece that won her the recognition of essay winner. Very, very inspiring. Congratulations, Mallory. All right, and now for our pals. I'd like to call up Spencer Anderson, Zade Kabor, Sienna Brown, Brighton Welch, Mallory Keller, Ariana Gain, Piper Halpern, Marley Sine, Dutch McLennan, and Gabe Pozdrew. Through our TMS Pal program, this admiral group of 7th and 8th grade students have been trained and paired with a struggling group of 6th graders to provide weekly mentoring support. For the last eight weeks, these mentors have been focusing on building rapport, working with their mentees on goal-setting, supporting executive functioning skills, celebrating successes, and tips and strategies to thrive in middle school. We appreciate their time, passion, and commitment to their colleagues and peers, and the love that they've shown for their fellow students. Thank you so much for all that you do. Nice job, guys. And now for Chapman University's Holocaust Art and Writing winners. I would like to call up Anna Sanquist, Karina Pitts, and Teddy Hackett. All of our Thurston 8th graders took on a very challenging prompt, embraced a Holocaust survivor's full video testimony, and submitted a writing piece, either poetry or prose, to this year's theme, "Turning Memory to Strength: Living with Courage, Resilience, and Hope." These three really stood out for the creative way they responded to the prompt, and we would like to recognize all of them for their passion, creativity, and support. Thank you for your touching entries, and congratulations. I'm gonna combine both. Congratulations. And now I'd like to combine both our Math Counts Award winners and also our AMC 8 Award winners too as well. I would like to call up Zoe Tran, Douglas Noddage, and Zachary Mentor, and Lyra Ramazan, and Jackson Arison. This year, the TMS Math Department hosted two different mathematics competitions: the American Mathematics Competition for 8th Grade, commonly known as AMC 8, and Math Counts. Zoe Tran, Douglas Noddage, and Zachary Mentor were the top three scoring students from the TMS Math Counts Competition team. And some repeat winners, Zoe Tran, Lyra Ramazan, and Jackson Arison were the top three students for the American Mathematics Competition. A big congratulations to these incredible mathematicians. I would finally like to call up one of our 7th grade ASB co-presidents, Ariana Gain. Ariana is a positive leader who effectively runs meetings and is well-respected by her peers. She is responsible and task-oriented, and has the ability to motivate others to complete the task at hand. Her calm confidence has a positive effect on those around her, and we appreciate her as a rare 7th grade ASB co-president. Thank you for all that you do. You rock. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you.
Dean and Jan, can you stay up there? And then we're gonna move to National Merit Finalists with Jason Alman. Here it goes.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me and allowing me to recognize our three National Merit Finalists in William Coffey, Maddox deBretville, and Vic Caseraneni. Come on up. Just for a frame of reference for our greater school community, the National Merit, established in 1955, is a privately financed, not-for-profit organization that operates without government assistance. The competition is open to all US high school students who meet published participation requirements. These scholarship winners are chosen on the basis of their abilities, skills, and accomplishments without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. So we're very proud of these National Merit Scholarship winners and finalists because there are a limited number of them in our nation, and these are three of them in our small school at Laguna Beach High School. So let's give it a round of applause, too. I'd also like to briefly recognize Mercer Jansen as our National Charity League Scholarship earner. And for our young students in the crowd and our greater school community, Mercer's dedicated numerous hours and her support in charity work in our greater school community. Congratulations, Mercer. Like and welcome Dr. Denise Selly, our district athletic administrator, to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Alman. I'm a little shorter than he is. Okay, it's my honor today to present to you some incredible student and athletes from Laguna Beach High School. We are very excited to recognize their accomplishments. So I'm gonna have the athletes all come up together, and then I will talk about them individually. Ava Houlihan, Lauren Schneider, Will Kelly, Sophie Rivas, Sophie Mariner, Kate Chang, Maile Metis, Melanie Fokowski, Luke Degner, and Will Bingham. Look at this. It looks like we practiced this drill, and we didn't. That was great work, guys. Okay, so first we have Ava. Ava, you wanna step forward? Ava was an all-CIF athlete in water polo in the open division. That's the big girls' division. And she was also the Sunset Wave League Female Athlete of the Year, and she has accepted a scholarship to play water polo at this little university you may have heard of called Princeton. And so we're very honored. She's gonna be joining her sister, Ava. Will, Will, step forward, Will. I guess they could tell who you are, right? If we figured that out. Will is also an all-CIF athlete in water polo in the open division. He was also the Sunset Wave League Male Athlete of the Year. Laguna Beach was not very liked in that Sunset League meeting about our athletes of the year, but we prevailed. And he will be playing water polo at Cal next year, and boasts a 4.33 GPA. Go Bears! Sophie, Sophie Rivas. So Sophie is also an all-CIF athlete in volleyball in Division 1. She also boasts a perfect 4.0 GPA and will be attending and playing volleyball at UC Santa Barbara next year. Congratulations, Sophie. Sophie Mariner, Sophie, come on forward. Sophie is also an all-CIF athlete in basketball. She broke so many records this year, I couldn't even list them. And she is only a junior, so I cannot tell you where she will be headed. But we are excited to have her back next year, Sophie Mariner. Kate Chang. Now Kate, Kate is an all-CIF athlete, and you may say, well, they're all CIF athletes. Kate is a freshman. Pretty unheard of. Kate was an amazing on-the-court this year, and she also has a 4.0 GPA. Good job, Kate. Luke Degner and Will Bingham were not able to join us this evening, but they are also all-CIF athletes. And just as a little context, as an all-CIF athlete, many states refer to that as like all-state. So it's very similar to being an all-state athlete, but because we're governed by the CIF section, we call them all-CIF. But let me just tell you, it is a big deal. So congratulations to those athletes. We also have honoring this evening, Maile Metis, who made a great entrance. Step forward, Maile. No, you're good, Maile. The funny thing about Maile is he is an incredible runner, and I can only tell you that he runs like a gazelle, and I watch him in long-distance races, and it's just fascinating to watch him on those last, you know, 30 yards, and he looks like he hasn't even broken a sweat. Maile has been honored this year as our Orange County Athletic Director's Athlete of Character recipient. And this is just given to those students that display incredible character. Maile is described by his coach as being very honorable, and also one of those individuals that has a great positive influence on his teammates. And so this is a very divisioning and prestigious honor, Maile. Congratulations. And then our final athlete, Melanie Fokowski. Melanie, step forward, last but not least. And then our final athlete, Melanie Fokowski. Melanie, step forward. Last but not least, Melanie was our female Orange County Athletic Director's Athlete of Character recipient. Again, one of those kids that is just super positive and an incredible teammate, always giving 100%. She was also will be recognized tomorrow at a luncheon as our Rory Student of the Month recipient. And she will be attending and running track and cross country at San Diego State next year. Congratulations. And finally, we have Lauren Schneider. Lauren, come forward. How are you? She's so, anyway, great kid. All CIF athlete, water polo in the open division and again, a junior. So Coach is going to be very excited to have Lauren back. And this young lady has an incredible personality. If you've seen her in the pool, you can still see that smile from ear to ear that is just incredible. And I've noticed that all season long. Congratulations, Lauren. So one final round of applause for these incredible student athletes. Great job, guys.
Yeah. Deanne Jenkey, if you want to come on, step back down. And then Kelly and I'll go up to do mistress. Yep. And then Kelly and I are going to join Jason at the.
At this time, I'd like to honor school community members that really support our great programs, specifically athletic booster programs. We cannot have the success we have in our league and in our seasons without our fabulous parent support group. So to start off, I'd like to honor two of our amazing baseball reps, Stacy Capabianco and Fran Kidd. We'd just love to recognize you for the hard work you put in for Coach Sears and his family this year, which it was amazing, the things that you coordinated and the honors that you provided for our baseball community. Aside from handling your normal booster responsibilities, which you do an amazing job, you went above and beyond during such a tragic and challenging time for our program. And you supported the Sears family with love, care and support. No wonder you made me do this. Not only did you all help orchestrate a really amazing celebration of life for, in such a short turnaround time, you provided a ton of assistance to the family for travel, lodging and raising financial support with a GoFundMe page that raised almost $30,000. So thank you very much. All right. Hopefully this next one will be easier. Golf, girls golf rep. We're keeping it in the family here. This is Ms. Christie Conlin, Mr. Conlin's better half. She's been the girls golf booster rep for four years. That's a lot of booster repping. She was always eager to help support where needed. It's a thankless job, but it would be, we'd be missing out if we didn't take the time to thank her for her commitment, dedication and love for the girls in the program. Due to her support, Coach Hendrickson was able to focus more on coaching while she did all the dirty work behind the scenes. So thank you, Christie Conlin. Please extend that message to Christie. And as Boys Soccer Representative, Joanna Diver. I don't know if she's in the crowd tonight. Just to recognize her, she gives so much to the program with her organization. The boys soccer banquets always are amazing. And it was a great one this year. She made it extra special for our graduating seniors and she's always in it for the boys. And, you know, we just wanted to provide her some recognition tonight. So congratulations.
Okay, we have a few more. We have Angela Edwards and Angela was not able to make it this evening, but she was our girls soccer rep. And Angela has been a booster rep for the past three seasons and it's been an absolute labor of love for Angela. She's taking care of the players, parents and the program as if they were her own flesh and blood. A lot of the program's field success has been her tireless work behind the scenes so that the players and the coach can focus on soccer. So our thanks to Angela Edwards. We also have our football booster rep, Monica Golden. Monica was not able to make it this evening and Monica's been the backbone of the football program for three years. In her first year as booster rep, she guided 60 players and 10 coaches through a spectacular trip to Washington DC and to New York City. She brought much-needed structure and stability to everything that is done on and off the field. The football staff's incredibly thankful that Monica's a part of the program and the team and look forward to many years of her leadership and guidance. You notice how Coach Shanahan said that at the end to kind of foreshadow this expectation that Monica will stay around. Danielle Roder schmeyer, cheer rep. Danielle, come on up. Let's clap it up for Danielle. Danielle is our cheer rep, our cheer mom. She always goes above and beyond for the cheer team and finds ways to make the lives of the coaches easier, which is not always an easy task, but she does it. Danielle's an amazing communicator and is the ideal parent to work with. We know we can always rely on her to make every event for our team extra special. Coaches Johnson and Long want to extend their appreciation to you. Thank you. Danielle, thank you. And Kelly Boyd. Come on up. Yeah, you got to come up here while we talk about you. I don't think Kelly is a new face to many of us here. It's impossible to list all the things that Kelly does to enhance the Laguna Beach High School athletic program. Serving as the overall Booster Club President, Kelly provides support and guidance to the reps for all sports, but her skills far surpass the traditional role of an athletic booster president. She's taken an important position in the development of the Laguna Beach Unified School District branding. The progress made in the development of our branding book is a result of hours and hours of work by Kelly. Her husband will attest to this, right? Her expertise and experience in this arena has been invaluable to our school and to our district. One of Kelly's biggest downfalls, however, is she is just unable to say no to any requests we make for her help and support. I felt so bad as the athletic director that I was giving her strategies on how to say no yesterday during a meeting. She does everything with enthusiasm and energy and positivism. The athletic department, we are very grateful for you. And during my first months here, I can't imagine having done this without you. Thank you, Kelly.
The next category is our 2021-22 Classified Employee of the Year Division Winners.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. Doug Bowman and Elizabeth Phillips. I wasn't recognizing you without a hat on. Turned off there for a second. Doug was our category winner in the custodial maintenance nutrition services, security services category. For those that work in the district, I mean Doug is our backbone. He is everywhere. He is everything for us. When you need, you need something done, he will drop everything to help you out and does it with a smile on his face. And, you know, I've enjoyed working with Doug for a number of years and we appreciate all that you do for the district and thank you so much. Thank you. And Elizabeth Phillips was the winner for the health and student services category. She's unable to be here this evening. We now have our overall, sorry, little bug, Classified Employee of the Year. Can Kelly Murda please come forward? So Kelly is, I mean attacked by a bug. Kelly is the face of our district office. She is the warm, smiling face that everyone sees when, when they walk in. She greets them with just such care and compassion and cares so deeply to ensure that everyone is treated respectfully and is supported and helpful. I mean, there isn't an employee in this district that hasn't been supported in some way by Kelly. It is an honor and a privilege for me to have her in my department as a human resources assistant, but I could talk all day, but I'll phone give him three to five sentences. So Kelly, we appreciate everything you do so much. We love you and congratulations. We now have our LB USC Teacher of the Year, Megan Baskin, please go forward. And Mr. Vidal. That, that absolutely says it all, but I'm going to have Principal Joe Vidal say a few words.
I can't top that. I'll try. So our Teacher of the Year, Megan Baskin, is the team member every teacher and admin ever hoped for. She is a teacher that brings history to life and also creates a class community that makes students feel safe and invites them to take intellectual risks, to grow as critical thinkers and to celebrate each other. She steps up whenever asked, being willing to lead and collaborate in order to make TMS a very special place that we love to be. It was no surprise to any of us that she is the Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
All right. We have now made it to the port of the recognition event that so many of us are here for. So what we'd like to do, I'm going to call all the retirees that are here up to, to join us on the stage. And then supervisors, please make your way off to the right here so you can be ready to give your, share a few words. So can please welcome Deborah Pell. Tamara Bonneville. Anastasia Boer. Mr. Duddy, I don't believe he was able to make it this evening. Deborah Finerty. Jane Greenwald. William Guido. Did you make it this evening? Annie Herrick Dressler. Wendy Hughes. Dawn Honeycutt, but she's not with us this evening, I don't believe. Mara Leginsma as well, but she's not here this evening. Sandra Jones. Where are you Sandra? She supposed to make it? John Motley, Top of the World, did you make it as well? Having a high no-show rate this evening. Sarah Proman. There she is. All right. Elizabeth Phillips, but I don't believe she's here. Peter Roche. Thank you. Elizabeth will be joining us in just a moment. Peter Roche. Come on down, Peter. Annie Sadler, but was unable to make it this evening. Richard Stealyn was unable to make it this evening. Steve Sogo was unable to make it this evening. Nick Terrell, is Nick here? And William, you made it. Come on down, William. There you go, Will. No Nick Terrell. How about Tamara Wong? Tamara's in the audience. All right, last one at least, Stacy Yellen, but I do not believe she's in the audience this evening. So with that, the supervisors are going to share a few words about, about each retiree.
No roasting, no roasting. Well, thank you. I get the distinct pleasure to acknowledge Deborah Pell, the leader of our nutrition services program. She's been with our district for 30 years. You can imagine the impact that she's had for us. So for 30 years, Deborah has served in Laguna Beach Unified and she's been providing essential services, meals and support to students in our district. And to be brief, but trying to summarize what Deborah has brought to us in the most meaningful way possible, I'd just like to say, Deborah, thank you. Thank you for providing for all of our students. That includes two of my kids that eat the meals every day. Thank you. I know the immense amount of time and energy you dedicated to treat each child as if they're your own, as if they're your own. And that's really important. And it's something that I hope we can carry on forever here. You have earned, you've earned an amazing retirement and we hope that your next adventure brings nothing but joy and good health for you and your entire family. Thank you.
Sure. Absolutely. I'd like to present to our Elmore staff on behalf of Mr. Duddy. And our first one is Debbie Finerty. Can you please step up? Debbie can be admired in many ways, but the thing that stands out most to Mr. Duddy is her dedication to student learning. Debbie takes the time to get to know every student in her class and how they learn best. She then spends countless hours preparing lessons in her classroom to meet all students' needs. Congratulations, Debbie. And Tamara Wong. Step on forward, Tamara. Tamara goes the extra mile to make sure everything in her classroom is just right. Her organization and planning of meaningful lessons of her students go a long way to helping every student in her classroom thrive. Her dedication to teaching and learning at Elmore has had a positive impact on generations of Laguna Beach students who still stay in contact with her. Congratulations, Tamara. William Guido, step forward, please. And, ah. I, I don't think we could ever, ever find the right words to describe how much William will be missed by our Top of the World community. For so many years, he has served at the heart of all that we do. will be missed by our Top of the World community. For so many years, he has served at the heart of all that we do. He's taking great pride in maintaining our beautiful campus, in keeping us safe, in filling our coffee cups every day with whatever comes his way, and in spreading absolute and pure joy across our Top of the World family. Congratulations, William. And Anastasia Boher, come on up. Anastasia is retiring after a 20-year career supporting students with her last seven here in LBUSD. My only regret is that I only got to work with Anastasia one short year, but in that one short year, she made such an impression on me and our team. Anastasia's calm and confident demeanor and her expertise has been instrumental in serving our special needs students from our preschool all the way through our secondary classrooms. That's quite a spread and she's done a great job at all levels. We've appreciated her incredible flexibility, her incompetence in serving wherever needed and making a difference with our kids. Congratulations, Anastasia.
On behalf of the high school, but really the entire district, I'd like to honor theater manager Peter Roach. Peter, Peter's duties have extended beyond the realm of the artist theater. He is relied upon for a variety of high school student event setups. From noontime events to sound lighting and tech for assemblies, Peter's consistent attempts to provide and produce extraordinary events for students will definitely be missed. So I'm inviting all of you to come join me at his final hurrah at this year's graduation, where he sets up and breaks down everything with a pretty amazing team. So thank you, Peter, for your years of service and thank you in advance for June 9th.
All right. We got quite a few Thurston members up here. It's a bit tough for us. I will go ahead and start with Penny Dressler, if you wanted to take a look. We'll just let that be it. Just a longstanding member in our TMS community. Penny just demonstrates so much commitment and passion, not only supporting her staff members, but really loving all aspects of supporting the whole child, which is what we really appreciate. She is lovinly known as Mama Dee by so many students on our campus. And she's dedicated countless hours exercising and supporting our eco club, running club, and you name it, bringing so much experience to the work, to the role. And I'm a little jealous of her next steps ahead as she becomes a world traveler. And I know her husband is extremely excited to have her home full time. So thank you for all that you've done. You will be missed and congratulations. Wendy Hughes. This year, we are also saying congratulations to Wendy Hughes, another one of our physical education treasures. Wendy brings such a calm presence to, to our campus. She's an exceptional teacher, loved by her staff members. She's also a great administrative counselor and also a big sister, just when the time is right to whisper those words of encouragement, which I will deeply miss. So thank you for always listening and congratulations. We love you. And I would also like to call up Sarah Perlman, who's also another one of my big sisters on campus. No doubt Sarah Perlman is a Swiss Army knife. She has done absolutely everything here on this campus, from her role in the office or to her role as campus supervisor, or president, or mayor, or you name it. She's done it all and we appreciate her. She's always a welcoming, friendly face to the students that embrace our office and our campus and always offering those fair but firm expectations around, which I appreciate. She's always willing to jump in when needed, is always a lunch buddy when we want to order out, which we appreciate. And I know that she's very excited to embrace the next steps in her journey and spend time with her family wherever that may take. So thank you for all that you do. And Elizabeth Phillips. Hey. Elizabeth, you missed the classified employee piece. So we're going to acknowledge that right now. Let's give her a big round of applause for being classified employee of the year. No other way to close it out. I also want to say thank you for always being kind and loving and caring staff member and triage in between ice packs and Band-Aids and providing the nice subtle touch of support for all of our kids here on our campus. But we also know that you're down the street, so we were hoping that this is a congratulations and not a final goodbye. But nonetheless, we love you and we will embrace this retirement and wish you congratulations.
A comeback and visit. Thank you. And Elizabeth, you weren't in the room when we celebrated you as your category winner for classifieds. I'm looking forward to seeing you sprout a third arm to be able to carry these flowers. But again, you, I'm going to walk there in a second. Just, you got it. Thank you. So you are, you are amazing in all that you do to support the classified unit members as well as, as well as in your role as a health clerk. So we appreciate you so much. And here's some flowers.
And now I would like to recognize Jane Greenwald. And Jane, thank you for all that you do. She could be found supporting students all across our campus with varying needs, bringing a very big heart and tons of experience and strategy to the game. So thank you for all that you do. In addition, she even spends after hours helping, supporting our students here on our campus, providing students the motivation they need to jump over that whole, that hurdle. And she's always with them throughout the day and even after class, being a big cheerleader. She is loved by our teachers, our students and our staff, and we will miss her immensely all next year. So thank you for all that you do.
Few more, few more weeks with you, so don't go anywhere. I have, I have two more I have to do and we'll meet all the retirees outside. If I could get just these last two done, I appreciate it. Yeah, we have School Power, School Power and PTA. We should have put you guys last.
Yeah, in hindsight.
In hindsight. Just don't go far. Thank you. Now we got two more, two more, two more. Well, real quick is Danielle still here? Roder Shimer? Or did she leave? There she is. Is Harpal here? Is he here, Harpal? There he is. All right. Retirees will meet you outside. We just thank you everyone for your patience. I have the privilege, maybe. Those are my employees, so I can tell them the shush. All right. When we think about our community partners, the hours of time and commitment that these folks put in for absolutely no money and at times not a ton of recognition. It's not true, I know. Danielle has been our PTA council president, has been someone I've relied on quite a bit this year. We've had great conversations. She's an amazing leader. You know, she leads a large group of folks through long meetings and still finds a way to get all the work done. And I know it cannot be easy and I know that we, remember Osborne can speak to the challenges that come with running a PTA council meeting. But it's just Danielle's so student focused, student centered. It always comes back to what we're doing on behalf of kids. So thank you for all that you do and the energy and effort you put in for that. You can go up there and give Harpal his. Now, I'm really upset with Harpal for not dressing up like he did at the Fund and Need Dinner, because that was quite the jacket, but I understood it was rented, so you had to give it back. Harpal, again, somebody that I can always rely on, one, he's always smiling when you're in a meeting, which is nice, especially when we're talking about all the different things that we're funding for. And his energy around kids, again, similar to Danielle's, is always around, how are we making the student experience better? And that is a testament to the work that goes on in School Power, which I think Danielle was involved in as well. I don't know how you found all the hours. But Harpal, thank you for your commitment, especially this year through, as we came out of COVID and all the work that you've done throughout the last couple of years, actually, in being a support for, for us as a school district. We're just really, really grateful for all of the support that you've provided. So thank you. Steve's not here, but he's the endowment president and Steve doesn't do it for the accolades, so he refuses to come. So just, if you see him, thank him. Thank you, guys. And last, but certainly a lot, not least, Ms. Durand, executive director of School Power, could not be here, but we did put together a video that I know she's actually probably watching right now. So we're going to go ahead and play the video. It's basically 40 years of all this stuff that School Power has done on behalf of the school district, staff, students. I hope you enjoy it.
Hello, School Power. Since 1981, you have given over $13 million to Laguna Beach students. Let that sink in for a moment. $13 million to the over 10,000 children who have stepped foot on our campuses during that time. In the last 10 years alone, your donors have done some pretty amazing things. They directly designated over one and a half million dollars to teachers, grade levels, athletics and other programs through your annual campaign. You've given over a million dollars to fund hundreds of teacher grants, both large and small, ranging from classroom materials to microscopes, to real care babies, to books. You've invested over a million dollars in music and arts programs at all four schools. You provided long-term support to LBHS athletes to ensure they have top-notch training and facilities. And you've helped fund Thurston Zero Period to ensure our middle schoolers have access to more elective classes. And finally, you've provided over a million dollars to fund smaller class sizes in grades K through three. And you also helped establish an early introduction to foreign language at the elementary level. All of this in just the last 10 years. On top of all of that, the Fund and Need at your annual gala has raised nearly $2 million in the past 15 years to support diverse needs, from students' social emotional health, to digital literacy, wireless infrastructure upgrades for CLE classrooms and the AER program. More recently, you offered financial assistance to 132 families who were deeply impacted by the pandemic. This was the start of your ongoing commitment to help families by establishing a family resource center. And of course, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the School Power Endowment, established in 1984 to build a permanent and strong foundation for the education of present and future LBUSD students, which has now grown to approximately $5 million. School Power, over the last 40 years, our partnership has led us to destinations far and wide together. From mountain tops, to desert valleys, to the middle of the ocean, you have provided Laguna Beach students with so many gifts. But your greatest gift has been your steadfast support of each and every student and staff member who has walked through our campus doors. On behalf of all of those students and staff members in Laguna Beach Unified School District over the past four decades, thank you, School Power.
This concludes the exciting recognition portion of the evening. We appreciate everyone taking the time to be here to allow us to celebrate, everyone. As a board, we have one more act of As a board, we have one more act of business before we adjourn, but if there's anyone here that still wants to go and have goodies, they're on the side, and we'll join you shortly. Clerk Osborne, do you have any blue cards? No comment cards received. Okay. And we received no public comment today as well on our electronic form. So that brings us to, sorry, that brings us to 7A. Our next regular meeting will be here at Thurston Library on Thursday, May 26. I motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, your vote first. Yes. Okay. So the motion passes 401, and the time is 8 o'clock. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a nice night.